Good morning. It is Tuesday, January 16, 2024 at 10:00 a.m., and this is our regularly scheduled City Council Work Session, which is regularly scheduled on Mondays, but when we have holidays on Monday, it gets moved to Tuesday, which is why we're doing this on a Tuesday morning. And work sessions are a chance for City Council to work with our staff. Almost everything we talk about is something that'll be coming to us on an upcoming agenda. And so our work sessions are a chance for Council to ask questions of staff, flesh out different ideas for going forward. We do not vote during work sessions on anything, and we do not have any public comment on work sessions. However, when we have City Council meetings, like we will tonight, we always allow public comment on every single item on which we're taking a vote. So that's the public's opportunity to comment on those items. So we jump right into business at work sessions, and once a month, we have the pleasure of hearing from our HR department, who will introduce employees that are new to the city starting this month. So I'll turn it over to Teri Wilcox.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Mayor, Council. Today, we have a great group of new employees we'd love to introduce to you. We're going to start with Public Works.
Good morning, Council. I have three employees I'll introduce today. Excited to have all of them onboard. I'll start with Natalie Gomez. She is in our Parks Division. She was a seasonal for a couple of seasons, I believe, and is now on full-time. So I'll let her introduce herself and tell you a little bit about her.
Hi, my name is Natalie. I work at the Parks Department. I came here from North Hollywood, California. Been here for nineteen years. I like working here. I love it. I like, you know, in my spare time, I like doing, you know, cooking and baking and stuff like that. I have four kids, and that's about it.
That's fantastic. Welcome. We're so glad to have you now, full-time.
Thank you.
And next, also in Parks, is Kyla Breeze. So I'll let her introduce herself.
Hello, I'm Kyla Breeze. I work for Parks. I moved here from Aletha, Kansas, which is funny because I live pretty much right next to Aletha, Colorado now, which I find funny. I like to take care of animals, pretty much like pheasants. We have two horses, cats, dogs, a lot of poultry. But I really like looking, working here. I came from the bowling alley, worked there for almost two and a half years, pretty much. But this is like a huge jump for me, and I'm just like so excited to like get all experiencing and everything and just go from there.
Fantastic. Welcome. Glad to have you.
And then last is Diana Castle. So she is in our Customer Service section of Public Works, so usually working in the mornings. If you hear her answering the phone, that's generally what you're hearing from her. So I'll let her introduce herself as well.
Hi, I'm Diana Castle. I love working for Public Works. Jones, awesome. All of the guys over there are. I grew up in LA, moved to Vegas when I was 21, met my husband shortly after. He did 20 years, retired as police sergeant. I did 20 years in real estate, retired, and we moved here. He was born and raised here, so a lot of connection to the community with it. We have two teenage daughters, and they're my world with it. On the weekends, when the weather's good, we love taking the four-wheelers up or just going exploring. His family has a mine up above Silverton that we're building a cabin, so we go up there a lot and just have fun.
Fantastic. So are you the person that buzzes us through the gate when we come to Public Works and we want to come in? Are you the -- fantastic. Good deal.
All right. Thank you, Diana. Next, we have Chief Hall.
Madam Mayor, City Council, it's my pleasure to introduce Katie Parish. Katie is one of our new customer service technicians in the Police Department. She'll be in charge of greeting customers and then also taking some of our civilian reports and doing that. Katie actually was a city employee before, and she worked in our Animal Services Division. It's just another great example of how sometimes people leave and then they come back. And so we're really, really happy to have her back working in that role, and I'll let her go on.
Hi, I'm Katie. Like I said, I worked in animal control for a little while. I learned it wasn't quite the right fit for me. I'm very grateful I got another opportunity to come back because I have never worked with such an incredible group of people and such an amazing organization. Yeah, so I grew up in Michigan. I've lived all over the country. My husband was in the Marine Corps for five years and did a lot of traveling then. We have one son. He's eight years old. He's crazy, lots of energy, that's why we only have one. We love traveling. I love to read. We love hiking, exploring, being outside. I'm happy to be back. Nice to meet you guys.
Great. Welcome back.
All right. Last but not least, Finance.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, City Council, staff. It is with great pleasure that I introduce Susan Forghetto. She's actually filling Rhonda's shoes, so some big shoes to fill, but I think she'll do great. We had Rhonda's retirement a couple of weeks ago, and we're really excited with the Finance team and the Customer Service team is they're really doing a great job. So I'll let Susan tell you a few things about herself.
Like she said, my name is Susan Forghetto. I'm extremely local to the area, you know, out of high school. I had a couple of babies, spent almost a decade doing social work for the county, dabbled in real estate a little bit, and now I'm here. As far as the weekends and stuff goes, I have two teenagers who are in sports and marching band. You know, my partner's a local chef, so we are just super busy with all of that, but super happy to be here. Everybody's so nice, and I've met a lot of people where I'm at. It's such a hub, so it's been really nice. Actually get to know more people in the last month or so.
Fantastic. Welcome. Great. Fantastic. So tomorrow, we have a Bagels with Bill, which is our all-city staff meeting, and you might end up sitting at a table with a Council member. Reintroduce yourselves, because I wish I could tell you that we remember every new employee and everybody's name, but we don't. So just even though you introduced yourself today, if you find yourself with us tomorrow, just reintroduce yourselves. We're so happy to have you as part of the city team. Welcome. Welcome back. Now you guys can go do the rest of your training. Thanks for coming. See you later. Next, so now we'll head into our discussion items. We've got four on the agenda, and then we'll introduce any new topics as well. First on the discussion items, Tributary Street Extension Project Contract Award. City Engineer Scott Murphy is going to tell us about that.
Thank you, Mayor. And Greg or Lisa, whoever's got the, if you don't mind the magic button. Maybe? I could wing it, too. Oh, there you go. Sometimes pictures help. Okay. So we were talking about the kind of next construction project out in Colorado Outdoors. Let me just scroll down to the map here to get everybody oriented where it's at. So with Phase One of Colorado Outdoors, all of the kind of core roadway network and infrastructure was built. The northernmost of those was Tributary Street. As we've seen continued development out in this area, most notably surrounding it, the Flex Building, the Medical Center under construction, and the Fairfield Hotel, we're kind of ended up with a weird tale that we didn't build initially because we didn't know how the area was going to develop. And so we try and not do roads twice, and so this one was kind of left off. So this is the next kind of natural extension. We're not taking it, as you can see, even further on speculation. We're kind of doing what's necessary to kind of clean up this area. The project includes sanitary sewer realignment and upsizing. That was in the master plan. So on these, as we go through, we're doing the master plan projects as we go, so we don't have to come in in 20 years and upsize a sewer line either. So it includes a little bit of storm work to get the portions of the ditch pipe that aren't piped, and then standard road stuff, curb, gutter, sidewalk. And this also includes some short utility extensions down each side for gas, power, and we'll drop in some communications conduits as well here. So if this area looks familiar, this is where the Flex Park is also being constructed just down here as well, and I think we vote on tonight, when we talked about it at work session last week, or last meeting. The bids, so the contract award recommendation is for $709,645.88. The largest chunk of that, obviously, is the street construction. The low bidder was United, or Old Castle Southwest Group, which is doing business as United Companies. They're the ones currently building the roundabout, and they're the ones that did move mole last year. So we've had a good, a lot of good positive experience working with them lately. And then the other pieces that come with the project that we pay for directly, the survey, natural gas, in this case, DMEA, direct expenditures for the power, sum up to make that $709,000. The product was bid. We got three bids. Old Castle, KND was the one that built the Miami Hillcrest Roundabout. They were excellent. They came in a little higher. Then we have Able, which we hadn't worked with before as a city. They've done some private stuff in the community, but they were higher at 721. The bids were higher than anticipated, but kind of on par. So you go through and it's just kind of general, there's no, weren't any major scope changes or things that changed between budgeting and now. We, again, budgeted pretty conservatively this year, and it's still, the market's still a little, little ahead of where we were, you know, a year ago when we were setting these budgets, or nine months ago. So the, nothing, you know, it's not like a rebid or there was anything that's, it was uncompetitive. We feel pretty good about the numbers. They're just generally inflated, which is kind of on par with what we've been seeing the last two years, anyway. The project itself would be, scheduled to be done this summer. It's off, the trail's already, the trailhead over there is already closed, so there's really no new construction impacts. This is all done, that, this will kind of become the main road to that trailhead. So the trailhead will be reopened and reestablished when this project is finished. And then on to the budget piece. So we did budget $500,000. That was 400 out of the capital and 100,000 out of the sewer. The sewer piece is about right, based on where the bid's in, so any overage would be on the capital side of $210,000. Like most projects, this does include 10% contingency. We have two projects coming up. The Woodgate Sidewalk, that we think, the scope on that has kind of changed a little bit, that that one should come in a little under. The Odell Bridge Deck Rehab, we've kind of shifted around our schedules at that one. A lot of those dollars aren't likely to hit this year, so we're comfortable that, you know, in net, the fund is fine to cover that overage. And I think with that, happy to answer any questions.
On that picture where the road goes, okay, where it stops, that, there was a bunch of, a parking area where people will park and go down to the trail. Does that go to that, or does it go into it?
It stops right at the head of it, but all of the space that was there would be reestablished and maintained, and so there won't be any loss of any of that trailhead parking.
Okay. Yeah, because I was thinking that maybe it went into there, but it would still be okay, because parking on the asphalt is probably less maintenance.
Yeah, we'll probably still push them into it, because it's kind of at the tail end there. And it's, it was secured through the plat to make sure that that space is always there, kind of no matter what, so to kind of make sure all that stays consistent. We'll probably still keep a gravel trailhead, but it'll be less gravel to access it. And it can spill over into the street as well, if necessary.
Scott, is there other, to the west of the Colorado Medical, is there another projected project going in there?
Long range, yes, but we, we, the way that'll loop around and connect probably to Lana Drive, long range, is still kind of uncertain, and there's a lot of, there's big utilities in there. So we considered, do we go a little further to open up some more? And we decided against it just because, you know, if it turns and goes north there, that would definitely change all of our alignments, and we don't want to do it twice. But yeah, there's definitely more slated, just nothing in focus at this point. And so we're kind of just taking it as we go, not overextending ourselves.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, the Lana Drive connection is really important because it takes us into that.
The Lana Drive connection eventually takes us right into that Stryker Industrial Park and combines the two industrial parks. This one's more of a mixed-use park.
So it gives us more of a baggage for the entire industrial area over there.
Yeah. And Dragu's purchased a lot of land up in that area for that reason.
Yeah, and we secured a tiny little remnant triangle, so yeah, that's doable, and that lines up with C-dots, Access Control Plan that was just done, too. So yeah, kind of long range, that's how that area will develop. The plans are in place to make sure that develops with synergies to that out, so that all works, yeah.
I have an overall question. So I understand why we don't build roads if we don't know where we want them exactly, and so we wait, and we're building this road because we now know that we need this 275 feet. But I would imagine that there's, it's expensive for just 275 feet. The economies of scale, you know, if we were building a half a mile a road, is it a balance between those two things? I mean, can you talk a little bit, just big picture about building new streets?
Yeah, totally, and you're spot on. So the economies of scale play in, and that's why this is, you know, your cost per foot here is 30 to 40% higher than what you'd pay if you had a, had a larger project. Those sewers, though, the sewer and the water, if we went too far, are, the sewer and the storm collectively are about $300 to $400 a foot. And so we are paying a premium on this, but you won't have to go too far along that and redoing that twice, that you'd pretty quickly gain that back if we got it wrong. So it is, it is absolutely a balance point. And, you know, we, yeah, you could go either way with it, frankly, but I think this is where kind of the balance point we felt that this struck. Initially, too, on the original, you know, Colorado Outdoors, there was talk of going that far. You know, those lots are functional without it and accessible, and were set up that way. They couldn't have been final-platted if they weren't. But this, we know more is coming. We don't want to have all these things opened up and then bring in a big construction product at that time, and so that's what kind of drove us to look at doing them now.
Thank you. That's great.
We've also learned that developers change their mind on occasion. And so if we get a rough sketch now of what something could look like in three or five years, it's going to be completely different. And so we're just leaving, erring on the side of flexibility moving forward. But we're going to talk at an upcoming URA meeting about the next phase of development. That would include infrastructure like this northern part.
Okay.
Yeah, I think one of the things that Scott said is very important, because of the final plating of those lots, until their final plat is posted and filed, that we'd have no absolute definition of where the right-of-ways, access, utilities, construction areas are going to be. So until that final plat hits, this is a very wise and conservative way of doing it.
Thank you, Scott. Any other questions or comments from Council? So we'll see, we'll vote on this at upcoming City Council meeting. Perfect. Okay, next for discussion items. It may or may not need discussion, but I think it needs some comments, would be the ordinance to impose excise tax on potential retail marijuana sales. I'll turn this over to our City Attorney, Chris Dowsey.
Thank you, Mayor Bynum, members of City Council. This is, really was just a placeholder, just in case a citizens' initiative petition was submitted by the deadline in order to get it onto the April election ballot. The, that, the petition was brought forth to us. They, it was accepted as to form. However, they have not submitted the requisite amount of signatures or any signatures for that matter. So with that, there will not be an ordinance for the excise tax before you this evening. It will be on the agenda, but it will be pulled from the agenda.
Okay. So we won't even have to talk about it? We'll just pull it from the agenda?
Correct. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So it changes to the agenda.
Make sure you're talking to the mic so people can hear.
Yes, ma'am. So on changes to the agenda tonight, I'll just mention that that one's being pulled from the agenda.
Correct.
Okay.
And as a clarification, it's noted in here that this only was going to be brought forward if that petition was deemed sufficient and that that approval issue was added to the ballot. And since it is not, that is why it's being pulled. Although, I think it's important for the citizens to recognize that we are cognizant of that potential for that issue, and that I think it's very important that we have laid this groundwork and kind of set our minds toward what would happen and what we need to do in order for this to be an acceptable practice.
Correct. And I will state that the petitioner does have 180 days from the date in which the petition was deemed valid. So this may come back. However, it would be on the next municipal election, as per the charter, which would be in 2026. So if they do, in fact, we'll just say they submit it in March, it would go to the 2026 election.
Easy. Next up on our discussion items, Item C, Local Planning Capacity Grant Application Authorization. Our Community Development Director, Jace Hawke will tell us about this.
Good morning, Council, and thank you. This is a fairly straightforward item, but I'll give some background here, and I've got a little script to not go too far off topic. So the item I have in front of you today is a grant request for new building and planning software, specifically a new permitting system for building and planning divisions. With the passage of Proposition 123, there are a few grant programs that have been created at the state level. This is one of those. This is referred to as a Local Planning Capacity Grant, which was established by the Colorado Department of Local Affairs, or DOLA, and is managed by the Community Development Office within DOLA's Division of Local Government. The intent of the program is to increase the capacity of local government departments and divisions responsible for processing land use permitting and zoning applications for housing projects. The program supports local government's capacity to address affordable housing, especially by simplifying and expediting development review permitting and zoning. Some acceptable ways to utilize funding through this grant opportunity would be through hiring consultants for process developments, hiring employees for more planning capacity, or acquiring new permitting software. What we're doing is seeking the latter, really going after some new permitting software moving forward. While the city does have a permitting software that exists for both the building and planning divisions, that permitting software does create some redundancies. It can be unreliable, and it's not always user-friendly. I vetted both the Building and Planning Services staff on this, so this is not a sole Jace Hawke's item in front of you. But the current software really does act as more of a redundant data storage base. It's, it's really less of a development review mechanism, and that's the goal moving forward as I see it, is to, again, kind of modernize, and this has been the goal since I started, is to modernize the divisions and really have some efficiencies. And that's what I really could see as value here with this grant opportunity, is looking at a more modernized system as a whole, something that's more user-friendly, it's efficient, has project statuses viewable from the public, and it has an option for online submittals through applicants, something the county actually does and we don't actually offer. So that is kind of exciting to move into that realm. But with that said, the grant opportunity maximum request is $200,000. There is a 20% local match. What I've requested here is a maximum from the city of up to $100,000. I do not anticipate that it will actually be $100,000. I project more in the $60,000 to $80,000 range, and what that'll cover is the implementation of new software, the data extraction from our existing software, which is probably the biggest gray area, I'm not quite known exactly what the cost is there, and then a year-long maintenance and operational cost. So again, what I've requested here is seeking a grant of up to $100,000, not projecting that it will cost that much, but we're going through the bidding process right now. So just wanted to kind of keep that in there, just in case it's a little higher than what I'm anticipating at this point in time. So with that, we're expecting implementation if we are awarded the grants in probably end of 2024 or early 2025. Our current system does go through, I believe, summer, that's when the expiration is, and then it renews for a year-long process, so there will be overlap. Our current system will likely be in place until mid-2025, so gives us time to perfect a new system up until that point. But all that said, hopefully that makes sense, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Council, any questions?
Just for a clarification for the public, that the grant is in the amount of potentially $100,000. That is not an expense to the city. The maximum expense to the city would be our $20,000 matching amount on that grant.
Correct. Yep. So this, the local match would be 20%. So whatever our final request would be, that's, we'd be looking at 20% of that as the city obligation.
There are so many grants coming through DOLA for housing. I'm super excited to see you taking advantage and applying for one. It seems like it's a really good fit for us.
Thank you. Agreed. And I think getting in early on some of these grants is key. There's a lot of cities that don't have capacity to go after grants right now, that probably will in the next couple of cycles, but taking advantage early on seems to be paying off.
Great. Okay. Thank you very much. The next and last is a special events alcohol permit for St. Patrick's Day Beer Fest. I think this is a new event, but I'll turn it over to City Clerk Lisa Del Piccolo to tell us about it.
Thank you, Mayor Bynum and City Council. We did receive applications from the Black Canyon Home Brewers Association for a St. Patrick's Day Beer Fest on March 16th. They also applied for a special events permit to sell alcohol between 12:30 and 4:00. They're intending to use South Junction Avenue, south of Main Street, between Horsefly and Felonies. There is a really good diagram of the premises included in the meeting packet, and the premises have been posted in accordance with state statute. The applicant on behalf of the Black Canyon Home Brewers is Eric Svensson, and he is here to answer any questions, if you have any.
Fantastic. What a great, is it actually on St. Patrick's Day, Lisa?
It's on March 16th.
It's on 16th. Great. Cool. Any questions for either Lisa or the applicant on this? It seems pretty straightforward.
I'm just going to, I'd love to know more about what's going to happen. I mean, it says this is the first event of this kind for the Home Brewers Association.
Well, kind of. We've put on.
Can you, just for the record, introduce yourself? I know we know you, but, you know, we're recording this. So for the record, who are you and?
I'm Eric Svensson. I'm President of the Black Canyon Home Brewers Association. It's not, well, not new, this is new, and this is a new event, the St. Patrick's Day would be a new event. But we have been doing Oktoberfest for the last 17 years, and we're putting this on ourselves. We're, we are now a 501(c)(3). We received that status this year. Before with Oktoberfest, we partnered with All Points Transit, and this year, we're just doing this our own. We have no idea what to expect. The weather in March is, could snow, could be 80. We're also looking to possibly have a parade, would be a small, you know, we're looking at, talking to Maba, doing like a bicycle parade, walking parade, maybe have a, I don't know if the high school would be interested in leading the show with their marching band, but I think that'd be kind of fun. And, you know, we've kind of always wanted to have something in the spring, you know, some kind of event to, you know, kind of get rid of the winter doldrums and have some fun. We're having a Crazy Like a Fox will be playing if we get the paperwork done with them. So we'll have a band. We're going to keep it a little bit shorter than Oktoberfest. You know, again, we've got half dozen breweries, winery, still working on getting some more, hoping to get 200 or 300 people. Need about 100, at least to break even, so, you know, it should be fun.
Cool. It looks like the event, the special events permit is for all day, and I suppose at this point, you're asking for that so you can plan, but you're going to have it be a more narrow time that you're going to have.
Yeah, all day would be set up.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, so we'll start at 8 o'clock or whatever. We're having, Public Works will bring the stage down, and, you know, we'll be blocking the alley somewhat there, I suspect. But yeah, we'll be closing off the street all day so we can get everything set up and organized. We'll have a couple of food trucks. We're working on that still.
Cool.
But yeah, we should be cleaned up and out of there, back to normal business by 6 o'clock, other than the stage. I don't know if Public Works will grab the stage or not on Saturday, but.
Perfect. Probably so we can open the street back up. I think perhaps this is a great example of how the city encourages organizations to hold events. to hold events in our community that are fun for, for our residents, and that it's not the city's event, it's your event, but we're here to support you by closing off the streets, issuing the permit, and what kind of things we can do so your organization can have a great event for all of our residents. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hopefully it's the start of an annual tradition on St. Patrick's Day with the Home Brewers.
We'll see if we make money.
We'll see, and like you said, it, it may all be weather dependent, so, you know, it's March.
Well, yeah, well, it'll go off, one way or another.
One way or another.
Yeah, there you go.
Thanks, Eric.
You know, you bet.
Any other questions from council?
I just wanted to wish Eric good luck. I know, I think it was 1969, in March, around the 21st, it was my birthday. We had a little over a foot of snow, so good luck.
Yep, well, beer, beer goes good in all weather. So we will officially vote on this and take public comment at an upcoming city council meeting. Thank you. Okay, that was the last of our agended items. I wanted to bring another one forward and kind of update everyone. We, we did not get a citizen-initiated topic for our interactive session this month. And so Jay David Reed and I met with, with Bill and Ann and talked about, and Lisa, and talked about some ways we could go forward and, and maybe work on that so that we can have a strong citizen interactive session going forward. And the best plan that we came up with was to put the responsibility for citizen interactive session on the mayor pro tem to represent council and coming up with ideas we want to hear more about, and to work closely with the Community Engagement Office and Chris under Ann's leadership, so that we would perhaps do a better job engaging citizens who want to bring topics to us, setting the expectation for what those would look like, and then for following up afterwards. And so that's kind of our suggestion going forward. And if council's okay with that, that'll be something that Jay David Reed and Ann are going to meet about and, and set up how that looks for the next couple of months while he's mayor pro tem to go forward and make sure that we're taking advantage of that time that we're setting aside so that we can effectively engage with citizens and that, that it's not just them coming to us, but it's all the ideas that we hear about at the grocery store and conversations, and maybe minding those conversations for good topics as well. Makes sense? Fantastic. Good deal, sounds like a good plan. Any other council discussion items you want to bring up this morning?
Yeah, I'd like to mention that at our last meeting, we discussed the new snow removal policies we implemented, and we were kind of laughing, saying that that's going to be coming up very soon. And sure enough, it did. We got snow right after that conversation. And I just, driving around the streets of Montrose, I'm very impressed with the diligence and the job that our city staff did. The first day, they got it all plowed, all of our main arterials, as all of us delineated in our policies. The next day, I came and all of the central rows of snow were all being removed. And by the end of the day, and if you look around the streets right now, our streets look pretty darn good. And I just want to give kudos to our Public Works and city staff for the great job they've done on the snow removal.
Yep, and let's get some more snow.
And we hope for more snow.
We hope for more snow. Anything else, Ed? Done? Jay David, no, okay. Staff, anything you wanted to bring forward to council at our work session? If it's something you think the public needs to know about, maybe hold it for tonight and, and talk about it? Because those get, I think, a little more attention. People watch our city council meetings, but otherwise, looks like.
If you don't mind, I'm going to ask Scott, kind of an update on all of the grading work and everything else on 6700. It looks really nice over there.
Yeah, so they're, they got a couple items left on their punch lists. All, what they're working on now is the private side. So, you know, the, if you remember, in the development agreement, we were doing the road and kind of the core city stuff, and then they were interested in developing it. So they would have to do the dry utilities, the power, gas, and comm themselves. So that's what you see going on there. So that work is actually with the owners directly, not even under us. Yep, yep. And I think they'll, the final plat's out for circulation, so they'll, that'll be coming forward here soon. But I think, you know, depending on the utility companies have to come in and do that work. But in a couple of weeks, there should be no equipment out there at all, and it should be done, done. But it's, it's on our side of things, it's, it's just about there.
Could you give us a little update on South Hillcrest in Niagara, how we're doing there?
On the roundabout?
Yep.
Um, yeah, it's, the soils are behaving. That was our biggest worry because we're starting with the deepest, yeah, so far. We haven't, you know, we're not, we're halfway there. So they started with the sewer tie-in at Mesa and are working their way up. They've made it all the way up to the intersection now. That's a, if you remember, that was a master plan product within the sewer comp plans because of issues that areas had with grade. And so that gets us up to the intersection, and they're going to, they're starting right now on the big storm line, the big four footer. And as a reminder, we, you know, we do that work now. This is actually the ideal time to do it, you know, when groundwater levels are, are lower because we're fighting a lot of water when you get into the, those big 15-foot deep excavations and four-foot pipes, and it's, it's not easy construction. So hopefully get those two done, we'll be up shallower and, and over, over the hump as far as the technical construction goes.
That water you're running into now is solid?
Frozen water.
For the first two feet, yeah.
And I think it's important to remind folks that when we build a roundabout, we don't just start on the surface, we go underground and redo and make sure everything underground is good, ready to go, new, replaced. So it isn't as easy as throwing asphalt on the ground, and that you won't actually see any streets being built until everything underground is done.
Yeah, like March, April, yep.
Okay, and that it is scheduled, our agreement with the contractor is to allow traffic back through at the end of August.
Uh, no, earlier.
Earlier.
They had 170 days because, so the way the contract was written is we gave them calendar days. So they had 170 days plus any stuff that comes up, and they've had one day we've given them so far. But, so that puts them into, into June.
June, fantastic, that's good news.
So because they started so early, and that was, they, and they even used, you know, through the holiday, they took a couple of days off, but those days still count for us. So that just accelerates the rest of their schedule. Because the, the line's the line, they got to be done by, so.
Okay.
Yeah, which is great.
That's great. I think that's what people want to know, really. Fantastic, okay. Anything else from staff? Thank you all for being here. We'll, we'll see you all again this evening because it's one of those holiday days. We have one of those again in February. We'll, we'll have a work session in the morning and a city council meeting at night. Thanks, everyone. I think that our work session is done. We're done, see you tonight. Oh, and we're sticking around for a special meeting with an executive session immediately following this, after like a five-minute break. Got all dressed up?